Looks like we're ready. Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here to the first of hopefully hundreds of Sioux Falls City Council press conferences. Again, the idea behind this is for members of the council to get out in front of the folks in the community once a month and talk about things that are going on, both with the council and in the community. And it's an opportunity for councils who may have programs, resolutions, ordinances coming up, to talk about what they have coming on the horizon and maybe talk about some background with that, why they are bringing it and what's going on from there. So we appreciate you being here. As we've talked to a few of you, as we've been trying to put this together for a while, the idea behind this is to keep it interesting and keep it fun. We will try to do that on a monthly basis, and if we don't have things going on at the time, we'll kind of play it by ear, but we'll try to make this worth your time because I know everybody's busy. So today, what I will do, and I want to thank the councilors, Councilor McCorris, Sale, and Nicer for being here at our inaugural kickoff here to talk about a couple of things. And what they're going to do is talk about what's on their mind, and then at the end of it, we'll open it up for any questions you might have. What I will talk about real quickly on my end, a couple of announcements today at four o'clock. We've got a presentation at our four o'clock informational on the Riverline District. Of course, the mayor laid that out last, a week ago Monday, so they're going to reiterate on some of that. Next week, we're going to talk about the aquatics bond, that we're going to get an update on that at the informational. Of course, that's been the topic of subject for quite a few people as it's being, I don't know, being pressed that hopefully they get that through before there's some turnover on the council. We'll see how that works out. I know there's a lot of conversation going on with that. I would maybe touch on just a couple of things about the upcoming election, some stats about that. Jeremy, thank you at our city clerk's office for kind of keeping us on the ball and ready for this election coming up. Of course, petitions, the deadline to get your petition is February 23rd, so you've got 10 days yet. I would encourage people, if you're still on the fence and thinking about doing it, it's not too late. I can tell you for sure, I remember it like it was yesterday, but about eight years ago at this time is when I finally made the decision, and I think it was about a week or two before the deadline. So we've got, what, 215,000 people in this city, and we've got a lot of good candidates so far, but we've got a couple of open seats and only one candidate. So hopefully, we still see some more people come out and compete for those positions. So the school district, or the school election, the city election, April 9th. If there's a runoff election, that'll be April 30th. Right now, it looks like six out of the eight candidates who've said they have an intention to run have their petitions out. An additional candidate was notified or had notified interest, has not picked up the petitions yet. I believe I have that correct, Jeremy? And then the Northwest candidate is believed to have petitions circulating, but have yet to see those. So things are kind of coming together. Hopefully, again, we see people come out in the next 10 days. We have some contests, poll recruiter, poll worker recruiting. I think we've about filled those up at about 100%, and all 58 polling locations have been confirmed. So it looks like everything's well on their way to a good, smooth election. We hope so. And with that, what I'm going to do is hand it over to Councilor McCorris for a couple of things that he has on his mind, and we'll take it from there.
Chairman, thank you for being here today. Two things I want to highlight. First, I want to emphasize what Councilor Selberg was talking about on the upcoming elections. I think we're in a unique spot where there's going to be four new councilors. And so I'd really encourage the community, it'd be great to see at least two individuals, if not more, running for each seat. And so we need to get the word out to the community that local government has an opportunity to impact when you pick up the phone and call 911, when you go wake up in the morning and want clean, running water, when you want the streets cleaned after a big snowstorm, local government's where that action is at. And so I'd really encourage people to step up, take out some petitions so we can have good dialogue during the upcoming election. The other issue that I'm going to touch on today is one that's been talked about in the community a lot recently, and that's the issue of childcare. Childcare has been a challenge, not just in Sioux Falls, but across the nation as a whole. And the Regulatory Oversight Committee recently, last couple of months, has been spending a lot of time discussing the issue of childcare and want to provide an update on that. Next Tuesday is our next meeting on the Regulatory Oversight Committee, and we would expect to begin to see some things kind of come together over the next six weeks. We'd hope to bring a more formal package before the whole council for consideration. And in that package, I would expect to see a couple of different things. One is, we're trying to identify some specific objectives that we can have an individual or organization focus on to really bring us some more information with specific teeth in it. For example, the last 10 years, we've lost about 130 in-home childcare providers just in the last approximately 10 years. At one time, we had about 330 in-home care providers. Most recent numbers we've seen is about 198. That's a substantial decrease of in-home childcare providers that really impacts affordability as well. We know we've had an increase of childcare centers over that time. Some of the spots have come through that, but yet in-home provides a unique opportunity and can sometimes provide a real affordable option. We really want to look at, how can we incentivize and encourage more in-home childcare in our community? And what regulations are in place that we need to look at? Is there financial incentive? That needs to be taken into consideration. That's one aspect. Another aspect, a couple of us are in conversation with Southeast Technical School about how can we partner together on improving education opportunities to really lift up the childcare industry by saying, hey, this is a great career to enter into. We've got a lot of great scholarships in the state of South Dakota, so if you're going to be an electrician in South Dakota, if you're going to be a plumber, you're going to be in welding, HVAC, that type of stuff, there's a lot of great scholarship opportunities. However, there's not a lot of scholarship opportunities on the childcare front. And so many people don't go to higher education for childcare because when you come out, your wage is lower. So you don't want to come out with debt when you have a lower wage. So if we can maybe partner together and say, hey, we want to encourage, we want to elevate the childcare industry by saying, hey, this is a great career, but we need to provide that higher education opportunities. Current conversation, a couple of us hope to bring something forward to the whole council over the next 60 days for their consideration as well. And then also, just working with the Development Foundation and Forward Sioux Falls, trying to understand the impact to the business community. And one thing I would say is, I would encourage citizens, as your challenge with childcare and as it's impacting your work life, I think it's important for you to talk to your HR department where you work, and let your HR department, let the business owners know of the challenge of childcare because we need businesses to reach out to the Chamber Forward Sioux Falls, the Development Foundation, City Councilors, Mayor's Office, and let all of us know from a business perspective, how is childcare impacting the workforce? We're hearing from a lot of individuals right now, but we also need to hear from business owners of how it's specifically impacting economic development and job creation in our community. So thankful for Councilor Jensen leading the Regulatory Committee, and hopefully, over the next 60 days, we're going to bring some specific action items for the council to consider on that front. It's important for economic development in our community. So that's what I have for us today. Going to call on Councilor Sale to share a couple of things as well.
Thanks, Rich. Certainly, I'm not going to talk about anything that's exciting about. One thing coming forward that I've been working on a while, you're going to see a pedestrian safety ordinance coming in the next few months. I've talked to several councilors about that. What we've done is I've worked with the attorney's office and the people with traffic to identify what I believe would be unsafe locations for pedestrians to occupy. So if there's no crosswalk, sidewalk for pedestrian use, they should not be there. Speed limits over 30 miles an hour is probably too dangerous. That's what we're going to do. And the median is less than six foot wide. So we've identified some examples. I'll give you like East 10th Street and I-229, 12th and I-29, Rice Street, Veterans Parkway. Of course, emergency services could still be located at that. So if you drive by and you see me with a sign that says ban the designated hitter, that would be considered illegal. Or if I'm Marshall's holding a sign there that says, make peach pie the state pie, that would be illegal for those things. And it's because of the safety for our pedestrians, so we don't have people get run over that are coming on the off-ramp. I don't know about anybody. I have a 16-year-old granddaughter, and I will tell you what, she doesn't slow down until right at the very edge of the stop sign, that's the jam on the brakes. So if somebody's out there that's a pedestrian, it could be an unsafe location. So it'll be coming to the council, first reading on February 2nd. March 5th will be the second one. It'll be posted on the online agenda this week after four o'clock. So I will, that's mine. I'll take any questions after. But now, I'd like to introduce our great counselor from the Northwest, Greg Nicer.
Thank you, Councilor Sale. Last week, myself, Counselor Alex Jensen, and Mayor Tenhaiken testified at the state legislature in support of HB 1100. This bill would allow local governments to give taxidermy to an out-of-state nonprofit such as a museum. The prime sponsor of that legislation is Representative Greg Jamison, who represents the District 12 here in Sioux Falls. The bill passed House Local Government and the House floor last week. It is now assigned to Senate Local Government. A date has not been set for the hearing. I expect that to be pretty soon. Currently, state law allows us to donate taxidermy out of state, or in-state, but we cannot donate it out of state. The problem is, is that there are very few natural history museums here in South Dakota, let alone any that could accept a collection this large. So we're hopeful that the state legislature will pass this important legislation. The Society for the Preservation of Natural History Collections, which they lovingly call that Spinach for short, has stated that at present, there are several institutions who have expressed to the society interest in accepting the Delbridge Collection either in whole or in part. The Delbridge Collection is a world-renowned collection of taxidermy. It contains 38 endangered species and 170 or 180 total artifacts. And it's one of the largest of its kind in the world. It has some amazing specimens. The ones that are endangered cannot be replaced. You can't hunt them again. You can't import them into the United States, so once they're gone, they're gone. They're irreplaceable. I've advocated really strongly that we need to do what we can to preserve the collection. My strong preference is that we maintain it here in state and that we maintain it here in Sioux Falls. I think we might be able to do that, but I am supporting this bill because I want to make sure that we have options. I would rather see them saved than see them lost to history, and there's a lot of unknowns. One of the things I've talked about is that we need to make sure we don't make decisions based on fear of speculation. We have brought in AM Arts Conservation based out of New York to do an analysis of the collection. They just finished that analysis last week. They were here for a week. They've gone back. They're going to be working on their report. That report will be made public. That was asked for by the working group, the Delbridge Working Group, which I want to give a lot of credit for their work. They've been good advocates. They're asking the right questions, and they're getting us information. We're going to get information in terms of how much would it cost to restore each artifact, what are the conditions of the artifacts, and then some other information so that the council can make informed decisions about what to do with this collection. I did have a discussion with them, and I don't want to jump the gun before we get the report, but they were impressed by the collection. There's some really wonderful artifacts, and I think there's some real opportunities in what we could potentially do. I think if we keep the collection, we can do things in terms of rearranging it, refreshing the display. It hasn't been updated in decades, and make it more relevant and interesting, and to make it more compact and use less space, which is one of the concerns the zoo had. So based on the cost estimates and other information, we'll be able to make good decisions. So again, I'm continuing to advocate that hopefully, we can keep part or all the collection here, but I think we need to have the option. We can't lose this to history. And if it turns out, for whatever reason, there's still a lot of unknowns, that donating it is the right call. I want us to be able to do that so that we preserve the important collection for posterity. I don't want to lose it. So with that, I think any of us would be willing to take any questions, and thanks for coming. Yes?
Do you have a timeline for decisions on the Delbridge Collection?
I'm going to have Councilor McCorris address that since he's on the Delbridge Working Group. He might know better.
Great question. We don't have a specific timeline. The report from the third party is due back first week or so of April, and then the working group will reconvene, review that, and continue to push forward something to the full council.
I have a specific question, but in general, you guys are launching this monthly press conference, and three of you kind of are at the end of your tenures here on the city council. What is it you're hoping to achieve long-term as a council, as the body here?
Thank you for the question. We've been discussing this for a while. I've maybe had it stuck in my head a little bit with it because over the years, what I've heard is we want to have a little more of a voice as a council. Obviously, we're a mayor's strong form of government. Obviously, he's out front on a lot of issues and speaking quite often, weekly, monthly, as of whatever it is on the topics of the day. What I hear from certain councilors at certain times is that we'd like to have more of a voice on that or make ourselves our presence heard, get out in front a little more on those type of issues and have our own identity. I always look at it a little bit like Washington. You've got your executive branch, you've got your judicial, but you've got your legislative. Obviously, we're the legislative. We hold the purse strings and a lot of things in how the city runs. So I think it's time that we got out front and spoke more on it. And I think once a month isn't too much to ask, so maybe, as you're saying, a few of us are walking out the door. We're trying to do what we can to maybe, what we've learned over the years, take that experience and learn, and maybe leave something behind that might help as we move along. So that's my thoughts, and if anybody else had any, feel free.
I would just add that I think that one of the reasons this is so important is that just the upcoming election coming, we're seeing two seats with only one individual in it. We need to elevate the legislative branch, not just locally, but statewide, national as well. I think the executive branch gets all of the glamour, and rightfully so a lot of times, but we needed to elevate legislative across the board to get more people engaged. So I think one of the goals of this is just to elevate that, hey, we're making decisions for our community. This is a potential role for people to serve in, where you get to have impact in our city.
And just for anyone who's maybe watching and doesn't know, when is the voter registration deadline for the upcoming election? That might be a question for Jeremy, too.
Got a few for you, so bear with me. I had a question about the childcare package. What exactly, you guys mentioned a little bit of what was going to be in that, but what exactly are you guys looking for? And that public input from business owners, I kind of wanted to touch on that again.
One of the recommendations that came forward from the Childcare Collaborative was something called the Youth and Childcare Coordinator in the community. And so recently, we've been looking at, what would that role specifically be? And I think we've been having a lot of discussion. Would that be a full-time city employee? Would we contract out it to an employee? Or maybe it's not an employee at all. Maybe it's, we need these three objectives accomplished over the next 12 months, and we go to different services to have that done. That's what I would expect over the next 60 days of something to come forward regarding either a specific position or some specific objectives for the council to consider.
And I did have a question about the Delbridge bill as well. I know you mentioned that you wanted the collection to stay here in South Dakota. Does the talk around kind of restoring that, and I believe it was the arsenic and stuff? I know you guys said you didn't have that test back, but is that going to play into whether the collection stays here or goes out of state?
Well, that continues to be a discussion. I will say, from my viewpoint and talking to the experts, which I talked to again last week, the arsenic is really, for me, a non-issue. It can be managed. We just need an industrial taxidermist to help us in terms of how to display it. And that could be Plexiglas in terms of some sort of a barrier, that sort of thing. There's all kinds of hazardous materials and museum artifacts all around the country and around the world. And so I think there's some very basic precautions that can be taken, but an industrial hygienist, I think, would be our next step to bring in and say, how can we display it safely so that the employees can work with it and so that the public can be protected? Really, arsenic comes down to skin contact and ingestion. Aerosolized is not really an issue. So I think it's been, it's been overblown, but I think that we can manage through it. So I don't think it's a disqualifier in any sense, my personal opinion.
And last question for this, with the open seats and such for that, where can people find that? If they want to find like open seats and such to continue running on?
To find how, what district they're in and what to run for that type of thing?
Yeah, you guys mentioned there was some open seats.
SiouxFalls.org, is that the best? Dot gov, that's right. They just changed that. So yeah, SiouxFalls.gov.
Thank you.
And feel free to reach out to any of their councilors and ask those questions, too. I know we're all trying to encourage folks to be involved.
Counselor Sale, a quick question about the pedestrian safety. Sounds more like a sign and panhandling ordinance than it does pedestrian.
Nope. This is pedestrian safety. This is intersections that we've determined to be potentially dangerous. So and I would say this has been washed and rinsed by attorney's office many times, and this will not impinge on anybody's freedom of speech. If you determine that it's a dangerous location, and I'm, you know, I'm an old public safety guy, so that's what this is about. This is about pedestrian safety. I don't want anybody getting run over at those intersections, so that's why we push this out.
So will it focus on specific intersections that you have already identified?
Yes.
You're talking about those are the ones. That's it?
Yes, I have a list if you'd like to. And certainly, it'll be posted, too. It specifically addresses, there's about 15 locations, and we can make that available to you. But these have been determined by traffic, that it's a high rate of speed. There's no pedestrian walkway. Those are the things that look, you shouldn't be anybody there for any reason. So that's especially the high rate of speed. You take that, you know, you're going 60 miles an hour, and you've got to hit that stop sign. That's not a good place for people to be. So that's what we've got to do.
Of the 15, how many are interchanges within interstate?
Marion Road and I-90, Cliff and I-90, Veterans and I-90, Rice and Veterans Parkway. I'll list them all for you. Maple and I-29, Dale Gonklin in Minnesota, Russell in Westport, Russell, because Russell and Western, Russell and Prairie, Rice and I-229, Madison and I-29, Madison Street, Veterans Parkway, 12th and I-29, 10th and I-229, 26th Street and I-29. So quite a few of them are the interchanges, but also you take Russell, there's really no place in that medium. It's not.
So I mean, the problem is people, to be clear, it's not people walking and crossing streets. It's people standing at these locations.
Correct.
And they are doing what?
You shouldn't be there if you're just standing there. You can walk across there, but these are places that are not designated for pedestrians. There's no pedestrian walkway. I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to say that you can't jaywalk or anything like that. But what we try to concentrate on is people should not be standing and locating at those locations.
But they're panhandlers, right? I mean, that's, and I'm not trying to pin you down here, but that's who we're talking about. That's the problem that you're trying to solve, right?
Well, I'm certainly not going to use the term panhandler. So I'm not quite sure what everybody's doing in those locations, but specifically, it's just too dangerous to be there. It's too dangerous to camp out there for a long period of time. Like I say, if I want to hold up a sign that says ban the designated hitter, there's other locations to do that.
Is 10th and Cliff on there? I'm just curious.
No.
Okay.
Nope. Downtown is not included in this because those are low-speed streets.
Sorry, one more from me. So you guys said all the polling workers are all filled. Those positions are good. Is there any issues you guys see coming with the upcoming election with just polling places, voting, anything like that, or is it just mostly for open spots and you want people to fill them?
I could, let me turn that over to one of the leadership, the council leadership.
I would say we're here to encourage people to run is the main thing. And as far as hearing any issues whatsoever about the upcoming election, I think everybody's, we've stayed, as far as we can be engaged and make sure we're ahead of the game, and everybody, like Jeremy and his team, and has worked with a lot of the other people involved. Everybody that puts on an election, I don't think everybody fully realizes how many different people and what teamwork it takes, and it's a long time coming. And I think the planning so far is every war is won before it's ever fought. You know, it's planning ahead of time, and so far, from what I've seen, that all seems to be well on track. Anybody else have some comments on that?
I just want to reiterate, we have four seats being vacated. This is the first time since 2016 I think that we've had this much turnover. And so it's, this is a big deal. We have two seats that have multiple candidates, but we have two, the Northwest and Southwest, that currently have one announced candidate. It would be rather shocking to me to have an unopposed candidate in an open seat. And so I'm just hoping people just recognize that local government is important. You can make a difference. You don't have to be an expert. All you need to do is love the city and want to do it for the right reasons. And I would, I would encourage you to, if you think you want to step forward, to go for it. We need, we need good people and we need competition. So there's those two seats. You still have 10 days to collect signatures. If you live in a district, you only need 50 signatures from people in your district to get on the ballot. If it's an at-large, you need 200 signatures from anybody in the city that's a registered voter. It's not insurmountable. It's not hard to do. It's a great way to go out and meet people, do a little door-to-door. So if you've been thinking about it, don't be afraid. Don't think that you have to be an expert. So, you know, the only qualifications I told people is you just need to be a registered voter, and you just need to love the city and want to give back. So go for it.
I just wanted to say, March 25th is the voter registration deadline.
All right. I think that's everything. Everybody, oh, there's more.
On daycare, probably Rich. Obviously, we've heard discussion at the state level about the childcare crisis and it is, and talk of a summer study because there's not enough data. When I talk to the people involved in the effort to provide solutions, Thrive, they say, we have the data. There's enough data. Is there anything that, data that you don't have that the state could provide that will change this discussion in any way?
Great question. I think two serious data points that we still need to get. Number one is, how many people are currently not in the workforce today in Sioux Falls that would be in the workforce, let's say, if childcare was 15%, 20% lower in cost or there was more availability between the age of zero and two? We've got a bundle of data. I think we've got a lot of assumptions on the front of how much it's impacting the workforce. That'd be one thing. Second piece that's really needed on the state front is, there's good conversation right now around childcare state assistance. There's been some administrative changes on how childcare assistance is being done. There's still more conversation to be done, though, as if we're taking full, we're getting the full impact of what's available for childcare assistance, for example, in other states. One practical thing is, many people sometimes will not apply for childcare assistance because of maybe a relational issue where they don't want to submit for child support, so therefore, they don't qualify for childcare assistance. That individual might be staying out of the workforce then. There might be some ways in which we say, hey, let's help that individual out with the state childcare assistance. I think we need more data on childcare assistance, what's truly available through the state for that. And I think we also need, that's why I was saying to the business leaders, we need more information really on how much is this impacting local companies to put dollars in and so forth.
Let me put that another way, too. Is there any reason for the city to wait for the state with these discussions? Or should the city and the council, following up on what the discussions you guys are having already, why wait?
We're going to bring forward a couple of recommendations before the potential summer study. These recommendations we're bringing forward are not going to change the dynamics overnight regarding childcare, but they're going to start moving us down the direction of understanding what can we do on a local level, but recognizing that this is a state and a national issue as well. But we're not going to wait on that front. I'm thankful that they're going to hopefully have that summer study to dig in, but we're not going to wait for it to do a couple of practical things right now.
Also being on the committee, I do want to say that the Thrive report is fantastic. I think it gave us a lot of good actions. So I think we have an imperative to act now and do what we can. But I think we all realize that realistically, the core major issue is wages are too low and prices are too high. And how do you solve that? We can't do it on our own. We don't, we don't, even if we could, we, even if we wanted to, we don't have enough money in our city budget that we could potentially do it. It's really going to be probably a three-legged stool solution, which is going to be individuals paying for abortion of their childcare, somewhere, government intervention potentially, whether that's state and local, and then employers stepping forward. It's probably going to be all three, and we're going to have to figure out how to get everybody to step forward and see that it's an issue that they need to address. And so I think the big thing for employers is, if they see that they have workforce issues, they're going to have to see the dollars and cents of it, that they want to be involved because they need the workforce, but we can't solve it on our own. But I don't think we can just wait around, so I think we just have to keep pushing.
The governor said that she doesn't see any role for state government in raising children. Does that basically put the onus back on you?
Well, I mean, the governor has her opinion, and by the way, I do respect it philosophically to some extent. This is a struggle. What is the role of government? And I think it's a very fair debate. And being a little bit more on the conservative side, I get it. And there's a, there's a pull in me that somewhat agrees with that. But again, this is just a math problem that we have to solve. There's also the state legislature. But I think, again, I think what we can do is, we can do what we can to keep leading and talking about it being a problem, and just keep encouraging and having the conversation. So yeah, I think all we can do is what we can do.
I think the thing for us as a community, as a state, is to understand, one aspect I think we need to talk more about is, we're not just talking about babysitting here. We're talking about child development. We talked specifically about ages three and four. We're not just talking about keeping them safe, but what's the best public education that we provide and starting at what age? So I tell my friends all the time, you know, we can, nobody tells me that I'm crazy for believing public education should start at age five. And also, what makes me crazy for saying public education should start at age four? I don't know the answer. All of that, we should have open conversation of where the public should be engaged appropriately in those, in those things.
All right. We got more? Okay.
I know you guys said there's a thing tonight at four, but is there any update on the Riverline project or any comments you guys can give now while? I know you guys said there's a thing tonight at 4:00, but is there any update on the Riverline project or any comments you guys can give now while the camera's going?
I think it's a terrific vision. I think we're all pretty excited about it. We've been talking about that particular part of town now for a little over a year when they first brought it up. And as far as, I think when they laid out the statistics and why they're doing it and why we're looking at it, I think it all makes sense. The only part is, we're going to have to have some patience because right now, nothing's baked yet, nothing's done, nothing's really, we're years off from it. So it'll be interesting to see what we hear today, what the timeline is. It'll be well, well, well after our time on here the way it looks, but I think the vision's great. That's my two cents to it.
I've seen this concept around for quite a while. The biggest question the council has to answer is, who pays for it? You know, because we're the ones that vote to spend the money. So that's my biggest question on the developers of this. Who's going to pay for it? We'll have to figure that out.
I would say I'm open-minded. I want to hear about it. That being said, I think it's going to be something that I'm probably not going to be making the decision about. I think realistically, long-term, there's going to be, I philosophically love the idea of a convention center downtown. I've said over and over, that's where the convention center ought to be. But I think there's a lot of challenges and hurdles that are going to have to be overcome. Not the least of which is, again, who pays for it? Not only do you have the land acquisition, but I suspect you're going to be probably talking nine figures, you know, 100 million or well more potentially, if you're talking about something like that. And we're talking about a pool bond right now that we're going to be looking at approving. We have to look at the Zoo Master Plan. We have a lot of needs. And you're going to have turnover on council. You're going to have the mayor turnover in two years. And if you're talking about a long-range plan, you can't bind future councils. And so I think you might be able to set forth a vision, but there's a lot of what-ifs down the road. So I love the dreaming part of it, but there's going to be a lot of gates you're going to have to get through just realistically to make something like that happen. And again, I think it's going to be a good question, if the land purchase happens, who should be making the land purchase? Should the city be in the business of holding land and being in the land speculation business? Or should a private entity buy it, work on a plan, bring it to us when the time is right? I suspect you're talking 10, 20 years out potentially, where we could even look at this. We don't have capacity in the entertainment tax to bond something like that. We don't, right now, I don't think we could, I don't know where the funding source is. So I think there's a lot of what-ifs. So I love the dreaming aspect of it. I just think realistically, it's going to be many years down the road, and there's going to have to be a lot of work done on it.
Coming out and supporting the first one. Hope to see you again next month. Saturday, we have coffee with councilors. Mr. McCorris will be up at, is it the Pavilion yet, right, at 9 o'clock Saturday? So hopefully he'll be there. And the goal of this is to do it the second Tuesday of every month. So hopefully we'll go from there, but thanks for being here today.